All right, it is back in class, so we're gonna have to start the community of overhaul for the school district of Osceola Wednesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna start with goal call. I have Jan.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yeah.
Greg.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so I'll see if we'll be here any minute. But for this purpose, at this moment, she's not here.
I never have my ring around.
It's up tonight.
He likes this guy.
All right, item two, the widening and developing our facilities, so besting educational safety and security goals. Item A is elementary facilities planning. Just wanted to follow up on the meetings that we had. Web page is updated, if you take a look at it, I don't know if you have it up April or not, but it looks beautiful. That was one of the questions, make sure that we had all the quizzes on the webpage available as they come out. So the new presentation, so we did update our presentation a little bit from the Thursday meeting to the Tuesday meeting. Thank you for all those of you who stepped in and were at all of the meetings. Andrew made his debut presenting all of the key certain parts that were in need of attention, which was really well received. Also, we have the input form is open until November seventeenth. We are currently sitting at a hundred and thirty-nine responses. Just making it clear, reminding everybody that this is not a statistical survey, this is just looking for input. And we have the QR codes around. And that's about all I have. Just talking more at the board meeting, stuff timeline, where we're at, and what we're thinking about to the goal.
I just thought it was pretty awesome that while it was going on, questions came about or wanting more information, we were very quick to get it on the website and stuff to them, or I thought I went through all the products.
Okay, just the study is, when you reference something, people wanna be able to get to it. Thank you. Is there any off-class questions, like, oh, had that hadn't been asked, or that hadn't been considered? I mean, I know we've looked at this all the different directions, but not to put anybody else off. That's a question for a week here. Okay.
Initially, I was shocked that some people were assuming it was free.
Yes.
Which I just didn't even come to my mind, so it was good that we clarified that later on. That was my biggest.
And the answer is?
That it's not free.
Oh, good.
It is not.
Good. Thanks for getting that. And also, in the other presentation, Shannon put out an operational, perhaps, this is what it could look like. I don't know, perhaps, we don't wanna be stuck to it, but the idea of what it could look like and what would be a breaking point versus a cost to taxpayers, money point, and understanding as well that it is a community investment. It is the investment if we choose to move forward, it's significant, and to pay back that building cost will figure it.
How many would you say were each, like, attendance?
Forty-two at the first night and thirty-two last night. It was, and there were some new people to the community, which I thought was fantastic, to be able to meet new people and shake some hands and see what their perceptions were as they moved in. And appreciated, two of them appreciated very much getting the postcard, so the mail-in was a great idea. And how's our, the input form, how is that for responses? We have a hundred and thirty-nine.
You have to have a Google account to do it.
You set up a. Yeah, we checked that again today, Jan, and it's, so we have to find somebody who doesn't have anything Google to try it, because it's showing they just have to put their email account in. We have to find, we have to find.
I know I personally helped one person. That I'm related to, that lives right next to me. We need a little help, doesn't have any Google stuff.
I was like, just randomly going to people's house.
No. Without being here.
Thanks, girl. Thanks, girl. All right, any other thoughts?
Well, I wasn't unable to make last night, but Thursday night was good, and talked to plenty of people, provided feedback, stuff I had heard in discussions, so that was pretty good.
Do you want to encourage anyone, like, I hope people reach out to the district office if they're having trouble filling out.
Right, 'cause we do a paper.
I don't want that to be a deterrent. I'm sorry. Sometimes work comes before school.
All right, item three, we're gonna start with admin reports. Do you wanna do all reports, or do you wanna do our show? We're gonna do all admin reports, and I'm gonna start with Julie Bender.
Hi. Hi. So I'm going to be reporting for the elementary school and the intermediate school. Starting with the intermediate school, I do have the newsletter on there for you to go through. Some of you get it as parents. Lots of information always goes out in that, it's actually kind of a lot of fun to create each month. Friday is our first Veterans Day program at the intermediate school. So middle school has hosted this for numerous years, shout out to Eric Bergman, the whole, I mean, we have middle school staff here right now, they've always done an amazing job. With Bergman retiring, kind of shifted that white torch, I guess I would say, over the intermediate school, so we're gonna take it, we're seeing what this is going to turn into. We have some speakers, the Strum is going to speak, Randall Berg is going to speak, and I believe those are our speakers. We have a poem being read, we have kids singing, we have Nor Schmidt singing the National Anthem. High school band is coming to play some songs. The taps will be played by, I cannot remember, it's on the program, Dressel and Quest? Nope, I don't know. Are you playing it?
No.
Two, two people playing that, and then, yeah, we're gonna have some student readers and just kinda see what this all brings to us on Friday. So that starts at nine o'clock. We, we are, we are excited, our A.T., easiest guy ever to work with, when it's like, hey, we need the band, great, where, let's go. So that's all happening on Friday. Also, at the intermediate school, now, ooh, huge thank you to the whole Veterans Day committee at the intermediate school. Target groups, we've been working on, so that has been brought to us from, from the state, those target groups from last year's data. They have some crazy equation that puts students in these target groups that they've scored in the twenty-fifth percentile or below. So what we do is we make sure that we are doing something for these students who have made this spreadsheet from, from the state. One, one thing to celebrate is whenever we put these spreadsheets together, bring it out to staff, it's very unlikely that, that we've missed any of these students. So they're either already, like, being supported on IEP for academics, whether it's EOA or math, or they are in interventions right now. So that's, it's nice, and it's a shout-out, and like, hands-on, pat it on your back for knowing that we caught them. Yes, some slips through the cracks, and I'm gonna be very honest and transparent with you, and now that we have that spreadsheet, we go through and we make sure that we're giving them what they need. So we're working hard on that. And our Fall Book Fair that we just had with parent-teacher conferences, we were the last building to have parent-teacher conferences the end of October, we raised probably the most money that we've ever raised, and we, it's over eight thousand dollars. Super excited about that, it's probably because we had it in the library. Nope, not because we had it in the library, but huge amount, huge amount of that goes back into the classroom and back into the teachers' hands, so very exciting. For OES, so for OES, wow, these first few days, I cannot believe the genuine, like, love and passion the OES staff members have for students in that building. It is, it is, it's, it gives you goosebumps when you just stand there and walk the halls and look at the rooms and look at everything, and they're, they're amazing people in that building. And with me tonight, so Ruth Rodeo, this is the assistant principal, she would, she would say the same thing. We had many conversations about that, just the genuine, great people in that building. So it's been really nice getting to know people even more. I know some of them, not all of them, these, this first week, it's every fifteen minutes, meeting with each staff member, just hearing them out, hearing what's going on, sharing positives, sharing laughs, and then just moving forward. So it's been nice being down there right now, and really looking forward to just continuing and keeping things moving. So there will be an OES newsletter coming out soon. Again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the partnership with the whole staff on how we wanna deliver that and bring that out to families. So that's coming, and then, yeah, it's just going to be working shoulder to shoulder, creating those building expectations, behavior matrix. Andrew cannot wait to work with me, he's told me numerous times how excited he is about this, because we are going to change some things with pick-up and drop-off. We're hoping to do lots of things there. Just wait for it, it's, it's gonna be amazing, and so we hope. I mean, yes, it's gonna take some time, going to take some of the community getting used to, so Andrew and I having those conversations, looking at possibly doing something similar to the intermediate school, similar to if we can move some of the staff parking and opening it up to drop-off lanes, just some things that we're slowly dabbing into. He's taking, like, Google shots of things and sending me fun pictures that I can add arrows and things to. So it's gonna be good, and he's been making me lots of copies of keys.
Colored arrows, black arrows.
Probably colors, yeah. But I mean, more to come, it's all just ideas, not to stress anybody out by any means, but just trying to make it an even more safe procedure for, for kids, for staff out there, for parents. There's, there's always room for improvement, so that's where we're at.
Perfect, questions for Julie and Ruth?
Welcome.
All right, Anna Meyer, middle school, high school.
Yeah, I'm a little bit sad, I've always changed, 'cause I'm super happy for Ruth, but then that means I lose Ruth, so. Okay, so I, I also included my November newsletter in here for you. We are going back a couple of years before COVID, and we are hosting an after-school party for kids. We haven't done that in a long time, so our kids were like, what, we need to stay after school and do these things? It feels totally different for kids, so from three-thirty to five, 'cause we don't go to five-thirty, that just, we cross the line once we go to five-thirty. Things fall apart, so three-thirty to five. We have lots of fun things, it's kind of a little bit of free-for-all, we've got different stations set up for kids, and they kind of go, instead of when we do it in school, we rotate kids around. So we've got the pool for them, we've got arts and crafts and cookie decorating and bingo and all the really fun middle school things, like karaoke, you can come somewhere, visit a karaoke room if you want to, 'cause that's a blast.
And I'll make Cory.
Dance dance revolution, all the really fun things, and concession stands, so that, that will be good. So thank you to Renee and our student council, they put all that stuff together, get it all organized, set it all up. We're, we got lots of volunteers that are staying after school, so that will be next Friday, the seventeenth. That also ties into our pride card that I've talked lots of, lots of times about, so if you have a pride card, get in for you to that party. Just a quick shout-out to Ms. Larson and Ms. Gilbertson, they had their Washington DC parent meeting last night. They had twenty-eight families come to that meeting, which I was super impressed by. Lots of interest in going, so that was really good, some, they had some questions, we met today to kind of talk through some of those questions. Fundraising is the biggest question, just trying to find ways that kids can go. So we're gonna talk through that, they're gonna just start with being at our concession stand, at our after-school party, and selling some edible cookie dough, and maybe doing that at some basketball games at the middle school level, but I'll push out some more approval things once their families kind of meet and talk through what's gonna be best for them to earn some money. I wanted, you know, Julie's taking on at intermediate school the Veterans Day, so we're just, and that's really because she's got a lot of active and, and.
Veterans.
Veterans, and in her building, so thank you to them for do, for doing that. It's kind of a big transition for us, 'cause we're used to hosting that. So I have three very important men in my life, my grandpa, my dad, and my brother. So very different stages of their military career, so I was able to interview them, so it's a little bit of a personal project for me, too, but it turned out really cool, so our kids are gonna watch that, they don't know that it's connected to me at all, they won't go until the end, but I mean, that's gonna be what we watch on Friday, and I don't know how it will transition after that, it might go more towards classroom things after that, but kind of just a transition period, so thank you to them. And then just a couple other big dates coming up, we have a lot of just scheduled interruptions, but they're for good things. So our kids are gonna go see the OHS play, the Play That Goes Wrong, right title, okay, the Play That Goes Wrong. So we're gonna go to that on the fourteenth, then we have sixth grade is getting their cookie dough, that's a big day for us, so one-thirty-ish just starts cookie dough distribution, and then we end X two already, or trimester one on the twenty-first. That's it, any questions?
I appreciate you keeping that peace still with your students at your grade.
Yes, and we still have grade level things that we're doing for Veterans Day, too, but trying to create something special for them.
You can, and OES, we choose.
You want all of them, send them over if you'd like. Yes, for sure. So I mean, it says athletic director update, but we have that as a. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that later, if that sounds good, thank you. Next up, we had Adam and Nave School.
So next weekend, we have the, as Ms. Meyer already mentioned, the OHS drumming club has their fall play next week. Huge thanks to Dominic Christensen and Linda Ilosco for stepping in and helping direct them to play this year. The end of the trimester is near, we have two weeks to go. Students and staff are working hard to wrap up the trimester on November twenty-first. Last week was our junior campus visit, so our juniors attended, I think, one of four different school locations and whatnot, we got to tour the campuses, and my daughter went to go to a layer, so I, you know, from her perspective, just get around the campus, it's a pretty cool event for the kids to see, and just get, you know, a lot of, like, families, we haven't had time to go out there for some tours yet, so let's go further down campus and see what's going on, definitely different vibe on campuses. And, sorry, and then juniors and seniors have a chance to attend a career fair at Northwest Technic College next week to learn more about potential careers there as well. So we're trying to expose a lot of our students, juniors, seniors, to post-secondary opportunities.
Awesome, thank you. And then, you got one to skip by your director update, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Jesse Thorsten, Director of People's Services. Perfect.
Okay, so November is homeless awareness month, so I'm the district's homeless liaison. So last week, I was able to attend the state homelessness conference. I learned a lot of really great things about just identification, eligibility, resources to support, to support students and families, kind of understanding, we haven't had this yet, but the dispute resolution process and just the procedures, so just really kind of fine-tuning that, as I said before, you guys will learn more about that in April. Just to give you guys a little bit of a heads-up, we currently do have nineteen students who are identified as homeless. So homelessness is identified as families that lack, that fix, regular, and adequate housing. Majority of our families that are identified are double-up, so just kind of staying more than, in a, in a house with more than one either family member or staying with a friend, but we do have some that are living in motels and hotels or otherwise displaced.
Did you say families or students?
I'm sorry, students, thank you, I think I said families.
I'm not sure, I just wanted to.
Good, and then, we've also just had a lot of great professional development going on, so our school psychs attended the school psych state conference, and then as part of the school-based mental health grant, all of our school counselors last week were able to go to the school counseling conference, which, really excited to come together as people service team and just learn and grow together while doing wonderful things that they like, so.
Thank you. Shannon Grinnell, Business Manager.
We have kind of wrapped up that fall financial piece by getting the tax levy certified and sent out to municipalities, that's kind of that last big piece of the process that they would do November tenth, so we should start receiving them. The, this isn't type-o, it's seven-twenty-two, twenty-three budget is finalized, which, yeah, is, it's supposed to be twenty-three, twenty-four budget is finalized, and now we start working on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget process.
Where are we at with the audit, have you heard anything about that?
No, I haven't heard anything, but I've been sending, I think last week I had heard that a special aid report was due, and there's a report that's generated, and that's in the conversation last week, so it's kind of a piece of it. Middle school welcome report that they've pushed out the due date to the end of November seventeenth, so I anticipate that they're having this wrapped up after that.
Thank you. Dr. Mike Stiles, go ahead.
So my first item is, you can really update the policy about Narcan in schools, and now we work in Polk County, and Rachel brought in a trainer, so the admin assistants, the custodians, the administrators, and Rachel all were in a training session during service to learn how to dispense Narcan, and we then get it for free through the county, so Rachel has figured it out, and it's connected to our A.D.s, it's where it's available, and then Rachel can now do the trains from moving forward, so we have that available in middle and high school. We hope to never, ever have to use it, or if it's something appropriate to have in our buildings at this point. State report cards, anxiously waiting, will be out November fourteenth, so then we can all look and compare each other, and then really take a deep, big deep dive into, here's where we're at, what does it mean, and how does it look? Remember, we're not supposed to compare ourselves to anybody else, it's supposed to just be us looking in the mirror. That's not how we roll, and then they'll, we'll send out a notification to all of our families, and they'll all speak for us on the website. Take care of that. I send two thanks, I just think it's really important to say thank you to the community members that took time out to spend some time with us and listen to our presentation and offering, like, we guess incredibly important, and I know not everybody can make it, but people were able to find time, and that's really important. The other thing is, I also want to recognize the fact that we are very neighborly here in Osceola, because the St. Craig ball, the ball team is out on our field, when we are not, so we just were neighborly, that's fine. Just wanna make sure everybody knows that. I did have someone who asked me, why am I still practicing?
You're welcome, Scott and Ann.
We get some return from them, too, we, we borrow things back and forth, help the schools, so that's how we usually work together and, and grant, reach out, and, and things we do, so we use our score cables as well for our news bulletin tournament, so we, we share a lot of things and help each other out.
You guys share me as well, so that's true.
That's definitely all about.
Old winners.
But that is a pretty cool piece, when you think about it, we are that close, and we share a lot of, a lot of opportunities for our students, so that's great. And the last piece is the school closure draft, so you should have that in front of you, I have some copies.
And Darla, it's not super important to you?
Not how everyone wants to close anymore.
Do you want some coffees? Oh, okay. Are we getting snow? We're getting snow. Well, we might not get snow, you just never know.
Yeah, 'cause we haven't had any thus far.
Oh, okay. So the, the intent of this conversation happening now is so that we can really be intentional and planned if we have severe weather. You can see on your sheet, it shows a link, but I actually put the history on the back, too, so if you are curious, that's how many snow days we've actually had in the past. Oh, I have, I have that on. That's because, here's, this is my color, I can read it to you if you'd like, or actually, you can click on the link if you would.
There it is.
History of closure, yeah. That one, that one, history of closures. So this just kind of frames it out over time. You like the virus that, yeah, you know, it's a beautiful part about working in the district office is, so I'm like, oh, I wonder how far back I have information, and I went to Sharon and said, hey, do you happen to keep track of snow days? Why, yes, I do, magic, here it is, all the way back to what, two thousand and three, four. So, and you'll notice she hasn't categorized by snow, cold, ice, and two-hour delay. Yeah.
I find it helpful.
It is super, well, I am a history person, so I find it incredibly helpful, because look at all of the years that there weren't any. And the record is seven.
Yeah, that was the cold.
That was a good view.
Yes, that was a lot of coldness.
That was in Florida, and there's some Kansas.
See, history really does bring us together, 'cause we can all reflect and remember, and then you see virus, and I did go to her, like, you don't have a virus category? And she's like, I was hoping I never needed one, so that's why she did it that way. So technically, it's a day in March, then? Yes, that was a D.I. kid fence, oh, I remember, yes. So, and also, on the draft, you'll see how the hours of instruction, minutes of instruction, how that all works. Essentially, as Shannon described it to me, we, it's usually the high school, which is required the most minutes, so we look at that schedule, and then we figure out how many days are left, so that's why in our calendar right now, instructionally, we have six-point-four-nine days of additional instruction that's not required by the state. So Osceola is also overachievers, we know that, right, so that's important to remember. So if you look through the proposal, looking at, and again, this is based purely on past practice, I've talked to a few staff members, teachers, I shared it with all the department leads, and Sharon has looked at it, and the admin team has looked at it. So people have had eyes on it and helped me with some wording, because I was trying to do it by categories, instead, twelve-month employee seems to be a better fit, instead of listing everybody out, so that's some of the pieces. So essentially, summary would be, day one, students would have a true snow day, so there's no required learning from home, except what's required by their families. Building and grounds would report or take paid time off, because they come in to actually shovel the snow and do work. And it sounds like it's really productive, actually, when I talked to Andrew and two of his people, they were like, you know, we get a lot done those days. Weird when nobody's around, which you can get a lot done. And then all staff being paid, and then pay is not delayed. Sharon was really appreciative of that, again, this is a draft, you can give your feedback, but in the past, we've had the number of days count up, and then we would meet, and we'd approve one, and then maybe two or three more would happen, and then we would approve the other, and we would then try to figure out a plan. And we have talked as a leadership team about how to use at-home local learning, and we just never kind of flushed it out. In talking to them now, we really all feel that we could have a plan, not looking at sending electronic devices home with our pre-K through twos, working with the staff and the principals there to say, what's the right plan? Talked to some of our neighboring districts, and I know, like, one district, they have really cool envelopes that they send home that are sealed up, that you can't open unless it's a snow day, so it's like super secret. I said we should put glitter in them all, see what happens, funny, I don't know if that's what I know. I did talk to Kristy, and she's here, I was like, so how would this look? And she's like, absolutely, with the right amount of time and conversation, we could make, if we have more than three days off, something happened for all of our learners. And then day two would be similar to what we've done in the past, day three, in-service days are really, really important to our staff, and even though, it was, well, in-school learning is really important to our students, so looking at the students first, so taking that Monday after a three-day break and making that a student day, and then having the in-service day still happen, but happen on June third, which is the Monday after the Friday that we're done, was the plan. So still keeping that in-service day, having the opportunity, so our last half-day, our last day of school this year is a half-day, so even if we increase the instructional minutes, the last day of school isn't necessarily a super productive learning day like an April first would be, so that's why we went there. And then looking at day four and beyond, being at-home learning days. The other reason I'm bringing it to you now is also so that we can communicate with families and be really clear about this is how we are going to roll. The kids' club information on there, super great conversation, and that's what I love about collaborating with people. I sat down with Michelle, and I'm like, so tell me about school closure, and actually, first I sat down with Shannon, I'm like, tell me what you think about kids' club? And she's like, well, it's a wraparound program, how can it be open? And I was like, I don't know. So then I asked Michelle, and she was like, yeah, if you think about it, we have school closed, people are planning on working before school and after school, we have wraparound, not a twelve-hour day staffing-wise. How do you plan for that, how do you make sure we have the right staff, the right entertainment, all the things happening? So I was like, that makes complete sense to me now, that someone had the conversation with me, because we plan for in-service for those twelve-hour days, and for the summer for those twelve-hour days. We don't necessarily plan for that for a snow day.
Meals, too.
Right, meals, all the things. I mean, Michelle did run kids' club, and we didn't have electricity, so I mean, things are possible, but that was the, that, that was the feedback, and, and also wanting to have that conversation here at the table, so that we're all on the same page, and also to communicate to those families, because I think there's kind of this, oh, this is daycare, no, it's a wraparound program for before and after school. So, and then also with their, I think it's pretty amazing, for their early closures, they stay until the last child is good, so that's pretty awesome. So what are your wonders, thoughts, questions, ideas?
Do you stay in your, Becky, the, the history shows cold days, what's our guidance on cold days?
I'm cold, it's, it will be the same, so it's considered, considered a school closure.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we talking twenty below temperature, or twenty-five below with wind chill?
I have that somewhere, 'cause I've been creating a communication tool, I wanna say it's negative thirty-five, but I can't remember the awareness, like, I'm just like. You're not having it? So, there's like the words, I'm not real sure about it personally, it's the words, it's like anticipated something, something, there's like three different words that go.
Like the cold advisory and.
Yeah, there's, it shifts to an advisory, I don't have that, I can review the actual words.
If that's something, so parents would have, some people have an idea what that might be.
Yeah, and they have really cool guidance, and for me, it's cool now. Yeah, and they have really cool guidance and for me, it's cool now, so I'm actually, you know. If you get more than six inches of snow in this period of time, you generally have a close. And like I have like the little, who are the spotters? I have a whole little chart of all of that, but I'm like, this is, this is the first piece. And then, you know, Steve and I, like, Steve and I hung up forty-five minutes and I got, yeah, I know his route that he takes and the route that I get to take. If you go in the ditch, it's not a good thing, that's what I'm reminded. And then I also learned from our operations meeting that five o'clock is actually the target time. Where I was told it was five-thirty and I was like, you know, like, "No." Right, Michelle, we need to know by five. Right.
Tell me more about that, by five?
Because kids' club opens at six.
Okay.
So, people are on the road trying to get here. And we like to wake up community earlier than five-thirty. And the other part, like, to Michelle's point too, is even when we send out the Sky Alert message, it holds. So, for some people, if they don't get it till five-thirty, it might be ten to six before they're getting notified. And, I mean, they get to go back to bed, some of them, so they can't reach that. But that was the five o'clock call for staff.
Okay, and you pointed for the news, you had to get it out to, and then you missed it scrolling through.
Yes, so, and just, we have the checklists of who does the webpage, the Sky Alert, the news, like all of those pieces. And then the group chat of who knows the immediate notice before the news.
And you collaborate with other district administrators as well?
I do, I now have a snow day superintendent's group chat. I don't ever send anything to it, but I kind of want to. Like I send memes, like I send memes to my own kids, like, "Oh, hey, superintendents, what are you guys doing? It's not snowing, so let's just not do it." So, yeah, so people were, they were practicing, y'all had to respond.
There's a lot that goes into it.
There is. I learned about micro, micro climates.
And you'll be wrong either way, just like, you know.
I totally expect that. Remember, our district is a hundred and twenty-five square miles. So, it may be really, really snowy at Gavin's house and not snowing at all at Ellen's.
I always appreciate the ones that cancel the night before because then it gives some parents a heads up. But I also appreciate reading on Facebook how our cowards didn't cancel it early. So, like, it is, you can't win whatever you do, but that's always fun.
Or when you close, it's a word for it. So, any other thoughts, feedback? I would love the opportunity to be able to communicate with our people that this is how we would like to move forward so that there's clarity and people can start to plan.
No, I appreciate the forward-looking. I think I'm a big fan of planning ahead so that we're prepared and hopefully we won't need it this year, but we may and we'll be fully ready and staff can understand the pace, like, peace, that's a big piece. It's always been a big piece, so, um...
I'd like that kids' club piece to get out soon.
Yeah. I don't think it's a change, right, Michelle? The kids' club stuff on the bottom here?
Uh, yeah, we were open last. We only had one snow day, we were open, and then the other one we weren't because it was so bad. We had like twenty-seven kids. Late starts, we have more kids. We had, I don't know, sixty one day and seventy-eight the other late start.
Do you have staffing issues on those days?
Uh, yeah, it's, we don't know how many kids we're gonna have, whether many staff can make it or what time, you know. So... And we're in the way of the people following. The parents, you know, they're coming in, parking, and it's, it's just a mess.
Paul Elstrom loves when there's people that lot least following, so he doesn't mind.
So, do I, I'm just gonna ask you because right away to this, is there anything that used to be a priority for me or can, can this just be our plan?
I think it's, it's a process and a policy, so that's what I thought, but I just have to ask more.
Thank you. That is all I have. Perfect. Thank you. Um, next up is OMS and OHS athletic department report.
All right, I'm Trevor Schultz, I'm the middle school athletic director. I have a look back, this is my ninth year at Huronius, I guess, I took over for Byron Simon way back when, so, um... We have, currently, we have seven sports offered. Our participation numbers are strong every year. So, um, we started, Becky and I way back, seven years ago did we start? And everybody started charging fees and stuff and we kept our fifty-dollar registration fee. Um, that involves kids get a athletic tee-shirt with that, um, they get a year-end celebration with their coaches. And that gives them about a seven to eight week season. That's plenty for middle school, eight weeks is pushing, seven weeks is about right because a lot of those kids get into different seasons right away, they're traveling, basketball, they're doing whatever and they're, they're going all the time, so seven, about seven weeks is about right for those guys. Our jersey rotation, we're in a pretty good spot right now. Uh, way back when, J.J. Watt gave us some money. And he got us going in the right direction with some new uniforms. Girls volleyball team used to wear the old basketball jerseys, so that's, they were happy to get some new jerseys there, so...
So, how does that work? Is that like an on-ball wing?
No, but one time he gave us some money and then, uh, he gave out so much that sooner or later, I think he went to almost seventy-five percent free and reduced where school had to be because so many people needed it. And he gave a lot of money throughout that. If you look at his website, it's amazing what he does for people. And so, so we were very fortunate to get that at the beginning.
Sounds like old basketball jerseys, but I didn't know that.
And stinky old basketball jerseys, so, um, we got a lot of that. Very fortunate, the coaching staffs I've had put in, I've had a lot of turnover the last couple of years, so that's nice, so... Teachers that stay after too, that's also good to have that, so... Lucky to have officials around still and workers that want to help out and their problem yet, so hopefully that continues. People always ask, "Oh, where do I find all this information?" Well, we run their own website, it's all right on the school page, so...
Mr. Techzaddy over here.
Mr. Techzaddy, yeah. We're surviving, all good. We're very fortunate. Couple of years ago, we got a large donation from a community member and a DTA grant to start our BFS program that we run in the morning. Currently, we have about forty middle school kids that come in at seven o'clock. Get a workout in, um, start to fight at the program now, so...
And they were out on the field yesterday morning?
About thirty degrees, we're gonna use the turf field.
And they're not gonna wear coats?
Nope.
Carers out there all holding the lock.
Can you tell me about powerlifting in eighth grade, seventh grade or whatnot?
Uh, eighth graders, Coach Han has, his numbers have been getting big, so I think...
He tries to fit them in if he can. Because right now, we're, right now, we're over fifty kids in the, you know, in our program and not for school. And like I was in there, um, yesterday, it's, it's, it's full. So, but I don't, I don't know, I think he, he tries the kids in as he can and he works with them, but it's also hard because he's moving, moving with all his kids and doing that, so...
And with BFS, it's a good, it's a good something. We used to do that when there was a nothing and now that there's a something that they do.
That is true.
And just a shout out to the, to those coaches that come in because there are a lot of, a lot of coaches that come in in the morning and help with that program and they're not being paid for that, they're just volunteering to come in there and some of them don't even have kids in there, so it's a really cool program for our kids, so, that's a part for doing that.
Just ready if you want to come in before you go to St. Craig Falls.
Just go make your way room.
First of all, personal attack.
We'll have a lift-off.
So, those of you that haven't seen our weight room, let me clarify, Six Stations. Newer and nicer than the ex-girls.
Where is this?
Well, it's the old TechEd room, it's been lots of things and, um, well, last summer? Not this past summer, this summer, or we put it into the weight room.
So, like between band and the pool, between band and kitchen?
Correct.
Band and pool.
Band and pool, mhm. So, it was a TechEd room that was a player room for a little bit. And it's really nice because you can open up the doors and kids can get outside, push tires or whatever they're gonna do outside, jump rope, whatever, and then come back inside.
Do you use it for the evening too?
Yes, every morning. Thank you, Mr. Schultz, for having me.
Thank you.
All right, let's take this to OHS athletic department.
All right, um... Am I supposed to do this one though, or?
I'll start from the beginning for you.
April, sorry. So, on the front here, I just have, starting with our, our state championship, uh, girls track and field team from last spring and also then our, to the right is our two-scholar athletes from last year, Rachel Larkin, Dylan Swiluski. And Rachel is also our fifth, um, WIA scholar athlete in school history since it started in nineteen eighty-four. So, that was some big highlights from last year. So, starting here, this one of our sport team offerings. Am I clicking that, April?
I got it.
Thank you. Not trying to be bossy, I just, I don't listen very well. Um, just have listed all the offerings we do have. Currently offer thirteen, um, opportunities for, for, uh, girls and, and the eleven for males. As we go through, so we have a lot of options, which we do, um, for our kids. And our numbers have been fairly strong. I keep track of this since I took over as AD in two thousand fourteen. I track the number of all our, um, participation numbers in sports. And everything, it's, it's been fairly consistent the years. I do have the sheet here, I'm sure it's not coming up. I, I would see that we, we're starting to see maybe a slight decline a little bit in, in cross-country numbers. They're going down a little bit here and there and I think we're seeing that at the middle school level as well. Maybe on the opposite side of that for some things, we, you know, boys soccer is at times. So, there's a lot of different offerings. Our girls tennis numbers were up. They're about, we're about mid twenties for a lot of years, maybe like nineteen, twenty this year. But everything's been pretty consistent, uh, across the board. Um, like for, for example, last, um, spring, our boys tennis numbers went up. I was, I was looking at Gavin, they went from typically like twelve to fifteen to like, we were mid twenties last year. So, you can see some things fluctuate, but a lot of our, a lot of our sports are staying pretty consistent. I think a pretty cool thing for this last fall, um, we had five girls in our, our dance program and now we're projecting, right now these are friends, last year we were fourteen. So, get kids out, they're being part of it, they're, um, it's, it's good for them to have something to do at the school, be part, be part of our school. So, um, and I, I do have that sheet, but how old it is, I started the, uh, in two thousand fourteen, so it was in Excel. So, it's probably not going over there, this is something that's changed over. So, um, last year as well, then we, um, started offering to do sports and we've had three applicants for it now. Last spring, we had two individuals that did, um, track and field and soccer, girl soccer. And then, um, and now this year, we had one here for boys basketball and powerlifting. Um, but that one doesn't look like it's going to, um, work right now with the timeframe and the practices and the commitments of all things, it, it doesn't look like it's gonna go through, but we're getting through that right now. So, and, um, coaching staffs for this next year, um, winter, winter time here, we're all set. The coaches, we started girls basketball this last Monday. Uh, of course, we started dance already, started powerlifting yesterday. Next week is boys basketball and wrestling. Going into the spring, we have, the current openings we do have are going to be with assistant softball position that's gonna be open. And then our, our, um, boys head tennis coach and assistant coach positions are open right now for the spring time next year. So, going on to the next. Something that, you know, um, I probably do not do a good job because I'm, I, I don't think, I think a lot of our coaches do an awesome job and, and for the kids too, I think we try to stay hungry but humble. And what's been cool is two years ago, um, we started a couple of new ADs and they want to start this NBC Cup thing. And basically, it took all the schools in the conference and it kind of ranked them of how they performed in each sport in the conference. And as you can see, in two thousand twenty-one, we were ranked third overall in the middle-of-the-conference for all how our teams performed in conference. And last year, we, we took second. So, doing quite well across the board in our athletic department when it comes down to being competitive and how we're, we're finishing the year. Every year's a new year in, in high school athletics. Every year's a new year and you're, you know, I hate to say that, I would say you're kind of starting over, but you kind of are with a lot of things. So, we'll see how this year goes, but our, our teams are usually very competitive. And I, I say this all the time, our middle-of-the-conference is one of the toughest conferences in the state for our women. And you can see that all the time with the teams right now, especially the last ten years, the teams that compete at the state level, of how all the teams are performing. So, it's, it's definitely, and you go to, when I go to clinics and I go around to, um, conventional or not, people know that the middle-of-the-conference. So, um, it's great for our kids and our, and our, and our staff and community to have, we've, we've been having success. One thing we're also starting as a conference, um, and we're gonna go into it slowly, is GoFan online ticketing. So, this started about, this started getting heavy about three years ago. And what it is then is we, we're still gonna accept at the games, we're still gonna be doing all those things, but we're gonna slowly transition to people can do online ticketing now. So, there, all the middle-of-the-conference schools, I just had a meeting today with them, we're, we're all on board. So, what's gonna happen here, we're, we can, I actually have this stuff, it was just sent to Osceola last week. We're gonna do it slowly, we're gonna operate, so when we send on Facebook or opportunities if we're playing Osceola Prescott or Prescott Osceola, we can also have an our site where people can do online ticketing, purchase a ticket for their family, whatever it is, and then come through the gates. If anybody attended the game we had last year in the boys' sectional, some of the final were falls. It helped the Lions go through fast and furious. It was a pretty cool thing. And it is, it's, it's pretty clean. I think in the beginning, maybe you had some clanks in it and whatnot, but it's, it's, it's been really good, I think, for all of our most athletics. And what's also nice about this now is that we can use it with a concession stand. So, when I put on there in cashless, we're not going cashless, but we have the opportunity to do that. And I'm telling you right now, how many times people come to our concessions and they don't have money on them because we're so used to using a card. So, we're gonna have capabilities now. I'm gonna say it this year, it's gonna be slow-moving, but for sure that the plan is to have everything in place for next year. We're probably, we're gonna probably do a little test run this year and, and give it, you know, some practice.
Can you buy a season pass?
Yes, so we're still gonna be offering the season passes. And that's one of the, our discussions out between the conference, how we're doing it, because we're still gonna offer it the way we currently do, right? And that's a matter of how we can set up with the platform, and we're working the company right now, how we do that. So, we're still, we're still, you person a card, possibly, yes. We do it on the phone and have it that way, we're looking at all those things. Okay? Um, oops. So, the video board is going to be delivered, uh, next week, November fifteenth. So, um, which is pretty cool, but also I'm very nervous because we have a basketball game then the following week that we want to, we make sure it's up and running for. And ultimately, we know, another thing that's gonna be a work in progress, um, but we wanna make sure the scoreboard is working just for the game to keep score first and foremost. And then on the backside, we're working with Chad Leonard and Chad Leonard's class of doing all those bells and whistles of what we can do with the video board, okay? And right now, these are the companies that are sponsoring with us in the athletic department. So, you have our anchor sponsorships and you have the companies there, and then we have our premier sponsorships. And, and right now, I kind of stopped a little bit because I wanted to make sure we got organized, we had to board up and, um, but we still have three more spots available for premier, which I have been in discussion with other companies already. But I, I did just like, I just put the brakes on a little bit because I wanna see how everything's working with the board and how we can make sure with, with the time, with the, um, with what they're providing us, I wanna make sure that we can showcase them correctly and do a good job for them. So, I have huge thanks to those companies as well. And, and overall, I, I tell you what, even when people said, "Damn, not right now," whatever, it was a really good experience. Um, our community is highly supportive of us and, and of our, of our school, so it's highly appreciative. And I said already, thinking of Chad Leonard and his classes, they're gonna be helping doing things on the backside. We watch other schools at all, like there's opportunities for us to do like pre-game interviews eventually. There's a couple of schools that do like, um, a coach's corner, so they do it prior to the event. So, there's all kinds of things we're gonna try to start doing here, but I'm telling you, there's probably more in it next year as we plan. Okay? And then what this is here is just the advertising layout. And I wanna show this because, um, from top to bottom, basically, that's, those are the things that are gonna be out on campus. So, I know as a district, we have not, um, that's the word I wanna use. We have not done like advertising around, on our, on our district, right? So, when we, when we went this route, we wanna make sure it looked clean and it still represented our, our school. And I think overall, it does a really nice job. So, the top one, for instance, is going, that's gonna be the gym. It's gonna be right above where the student section is right now, okay? The next two are gonna be the baseball field, softball field, and then the bottom one is, is gonna be right at the top of the concession stand. I'm also having a banner gonna be made for next year, that we're gonna have one, another thing listed at the tennis facility as well so we can showcase there. So, we just wanna make sure we show support to our anchor sponsorships that, that are supporting us as well. Yep, so that's the concession stand one, that's where that's gonna be. It's all gonna be there, right above the concessions area. Okay? Yep. So, any questions on the video board? So, any questions on the video board or any of that stuff right now? And so, yeah, it's been a good experience, but I know that we're still got a lot of work to do. Um, and then I, like, like Mr. Schultz said, I just wanna talk about, I, what I think is the, the heart soul of any athletic department is our, is our strength performance. And, um, we, there's more benefits to it than just these five, but these are huge five core components of what we try to do and, and work with our kids. And so I just wanted to show that it's not just any. We want to perform at a high level, right, in our conference, and, and it's, it's great, we want kids to first participate, and then we also want to do our best to get them to, to compete at a high level. And so in doing that, we have to get our kids in that weight room, and it's not just about the old school, you sit there and do curls all the time, listen to that, we have kids doing pyometric box jumps, we have them do agility sprint work, we have them do all kinds of things. And what we do, how we can do that is through our sessions, we have zero hour, which right now, we're, we're at actually forty-five kids in the morning as well, high school kids. Um, we have strength classes during the day as well, between Holly and Dylan Ringer, um, we have our summer strength and performance, which last year we had over a hundred and thirty kids. And, which is really cool, which I can tell you, um, ten years ago. Worked a lot with Holly Johnson on this and, and, and getting our, it was always a tough place to get girls into, because it was a lot of things, right? But right now, this last summer, we had over sixty girls participating in our summer strength and conditioning program, and right now, and I would say consistently during the day, zero hour, now you're gonna see a photo next. Of what my current class is, with the kids that we have that show up at seven AM, um, and do it, and then we're gonna rotate here in a couple of weeks. But these are the kids that have been doing zero, our zero hour the whole first trimester, some other kids have been in weight training classes, some kids do things during our win with Ms. Johnson, um, and then we have class, uh, teams afterwards. So right now with powerlifting as well, we have fifty kids in, uh, over fifty kids in the weight room after school. So just a couple of photos there of what we do, um, how we use the facility, is in the weight room, in the gym and whatnot, we rotate through. So. I think that's. Oh, sorry. And then the financial component, um, what we take in per year from our student fees, so right now it's a hundred dollars per student, a hundred dollars per sport, six hundred dollar family max. And then we have admissions, so we take in approximately, uh, just over forty thousand dollars in student fees, and admissions for our events, we have, um, forty-three, five that we take in. Okay, and then expenses applies, Harold. The expenses we have with, with those things is, is basically forty-four thousand dollars, transportation is, is approximately another twenty-seven, what, what I do know is I think is missing is, the hardest part is with the officials, that's another, the official stuff is, is increasing. We just had a meeting today, and, um, the need for them is huge, so of course then the, the, the money goes up. And we're competing with the Heart of the North Conference, the, uh, Big Rivers, um, the Den St. Croix, to where they go, and officials do choose, and they will tell you point blank, they will choose based on sometimes on the, the money, whether or not. I mean, and, and I, and I get it, right, if somebody's gonna travel from Eau Claire, they rarely come to Osceola, but if they are, they'll make sure it's worth it. But we, that's kind of our range, we go from Eau Claire to, you know, Bloomerish, we'll get people to Ice Lake, Bird Falls area, um, that's kind of our radius of, of where we get officials from. And then salaries and benefits for the coaches staff at the high school is two hundred and ninety. Now is that in April?
I just have to add, to me, I appreciate is. I have numerous kids. I like your balance of, what do you call it, harder hustle or humble and.
I see humble and hungry, it's kind of like home soon.
But, I mean, I have talked to seniors who have never been in a specific sport before, or a sport before, who are really wanting to try a sport, and they're allowed to join. Like, that doesn't always happen, but you know what's, what's best for the kid, is, I mean, I just, I appreciate that balance. And I think the coaches do a fine job with that.
Scott, is the revenue and expenditures just for the high school, or is it for the high school and the middle school?
This is all high school.
And with the program, with you guys going to like, you tickets, how secure is the, um, information for people's, um, credit card or debit card? Um, and those many, how secure is that?
Well, I can tell you what they tell me, which they tell you they're pretty secure, I mean, I mean, like anything else, I think with technology, there's never gonna be a state that's not a risk, right? I mean, but it's a company that the WIA has used now for the last three or four years, um, using it for real estate tournaments, and I, knock on wood. It's been pretty stable. It's, it's one of the, there's been about three companies in the last couple of years that have come out and done this, and, and the Gold Fan is, is actually, they're becoming bigger, they're starting to buy more, so. I'm hoping it's the way to go, I mean, I'm sure it'll take cash, but it seems pretty safe right now.
And you stopped sending out your email.
I, I'll, I'll start this next weekend, because we haven't had a, events, so with the teams that are starting this week, I'll be sending out things here very shortly again with, with the events that, that are coming up. I have a blaster on my computer, so maybe that was it.
But it wasn't from ordering tickets on.
No.
Just to make that clear. I think we all enjoy them, so I know it takes a little bit of time, but I appreciate that.
I get them all, I'll get them all, there's no doubt about that.
And did your presentation then go up on the website, or on the board dots?
Any other questions for, for our staff or any of the others? Alright, that brings us to item four, improving our academic achievement with accountability through dad-driven practices. Item A, first reading of policies, which I know is why everyone is here. We love policies. Turn the aisle of policies to, and you guys said to me last time, the team, team ten and twelve, so there's a lot of policy. Actually, there's only one policy besides this group that needs to be done for our July update. So please know that these policies aren't policies that I picked, these are the ones that came through in our July update from Neola, that there's been wording changes, or there's been some kind of shift in how they're presented, or they're now one policy instead of three policies, so. Again, that's the why that these policies are listed there. The very first policy in your pile, the twelve sixty, um, there were some areas that I needed you to fill out because it, I don't know, it felt weird to me to fill out. Cause it's the incapacity of the district administrator, so it's hard. I just was like, I don't wanna pick which one that the board would want, so if you look down, um, specifically in the new language, and by the way, we didn't have this policy, so this is a new policy to us as well. But there's an A, D, or a C, so if you determine that the district administrator is unable to perform their duties, they may, and when there's an A, request be placed on sick leave, with pay, not to exceed the allowance accumulated. B, have the request of the board be placed on sick leave. And then C, request, let be placed on waiver of pay.
I don't know that the board has a policy on sick leave. But it's not been a policy. Is it? There's not a policy in the policies.
You're talking online through board?
Yeah, there is not.
And sick leave would be managed by the board, sick leave would be managed by supervisors? Right, so it's a handbook, it does say though, it does say here.
It does, it says policy. So that's why I'm asking that question.
And also says which may be authorized by board policy. For ours, it's by the handbook, so if you would like it to change, I mean, it does say may, so we could change it, whatever one y'all pick.
I think it should be wherever the, the information is, okay?
That's what I, but, yes.
Try to present?
Yep. Signing person, so.
Go together, and match.
So that's, uh, was it A, B, or C?
I wanna know what, and what does, for me, I wanted to know what incapacity meant.
Unable to do their duties.
But for?
Any reason.
I have to date? I mean, maybe it's too much of my work social brain, social work brain.
Your work social brain?
That, yeah.
I would say longer than that, because if, if I needed to take a sick day because I couldn't do something, I would take a sick day, right? But if, I think on the back, there's some reference to ten days. To the district administration, right, unless they deny the request within ten days of the receipt.
My question is why? Are we settled on being the board president that would have the authority? And I only ask because it's a rotating thing yearly, and I would say there's gonna be several years where maybe that person's not qualified to be in charge of everything. When it's a position where people take classes on, you know what I'm saying? So I had like, I know Somerset has it where it is, the board does a majority vote to decide who's gonna fill in, and in St. Croix Falls, it goes to the high school principal. But I just, I just wonder like, I just don't know, and it's not, cause it's, it's, it's not a broken thing, it's like, every year that position can change, and I just don't know if the board president is the best choice.
No, I agree.
I just have concerns with that.
I think it should be an educator. You think it should be a what?
Educator, so whether it be one of the principals or whatever, but I think it should.
I would think it would come down. In hesitant label, at any specific level, like, so I would think more coming to the board to put.
Like, that's, that's like Somerset.
More like Somerset, cause what if your middle school principal has much more experience or education and something like that?
I just think it should be another person, right?
Oh, I agree.
So, you know, Becky, Becky says that she's incapacitated for some reason.
Well, she's not, I can even tell you that.
Well, okay, but let's just for the sake of the argument, and then now we're trying to reinstate and one person's in charge of that, cause if that one person doesn't think highly or doesn't, that would be, you know. The government is set up in a checks and balances purpose for a reason, so the board acts a little bit more like that.
Exactly.
I know, but that's the thing though, like, the board president most likely is not gonna have any license or close to that, that's why it just stands up to me as.
So Becky, my thought with, um, this one in our conversation here is maybe let's do a little bit more research, and why Neola has it, cause this isn't even an option for us to change, I understand we can change whatever we seek for our district, but. I'd like to get a little bit more research from Neola, unless April, you know, this off the top of your head, what's meaning with them?
I know, I know this is their template, just with the addition of this current update, um.
Because Neola is run by a lawyer, so I'm thinking that there's probably a primary reason to, and I'd like to maybe get a better explanation as to why this one is set up that way.
My understanding from the research I did is the board president, because it does seem to be one single person that's talking to the attorneys, that was the rationale behind it. That was, that was the why, cause it's temporary until someone's appointed. Because would you appoint somebody by policy and then change it later as a board, so it's the board president would hold that. Answer the phone call, and then we need to get together, we're already appointing as interim, that, that was the, the rationale.
Policy thirty-one forty is not on the list, like, is that one that we actually have though?
What's the title? Yes, it's part of this packet for us to add in.
I don't think we've finished that ten bits.
Yep.
It ties in with the thirty-one, thirty-nine. So we might have to bring that one back unless you have it, Becky, you can share with the board.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, it's the original, we, um, actually ran it by our attorneys, so I, I have it in my, but I haven't heard back from the attorneys yet, so yes, we have it coming. It's one of them that we never had, I just wanna make sure that it's, that it looks well. So you want me to focus one and hold it and find out what, cause I will do that work for us.
You're talking twelve sixty, right?
Yes.
I would say, um, why no reason behind the, we're visioning that from their perspective and, um, that we are, our district attorneys have been on it, so that we know where legal stands on it.
I'd be curious to know, just, not every district will suspect, maybe like, do you like, interesting with Somerset?
And then that would be thirty-one forty would be.
And thirty-one forty, yeah, that was just a miscommunication of April nine.
Okay, thirty-one forty then too, yeah. And was another one, did April tend to look through the other nine that we've done?
Yeah, I had a question on thirty-nine, forty-one, thirty-nine, man, so Becky, I think you answered my question when you first started speaking, but I just wanted to, but. These were updates or revisions based on Neola's recommendations, nothing?
Correct.
Or feedback that we put out for that?
Absolutely, yeah. And in particular, the yearly warning language. Anything else on these, first reading of those nine other policies? That does it for the, maybe we can then, correct?
I have a question. Sorry, this community adding fund, it says that it's a new policy.
Okay, this is updated.
No, up on the top, it says it's a new policy. So is it because we've never had one for community on, or why all of a sudden are we creating them?
Uh, we had, didn't have this policy, and it was recommended that we should, because it's referenced other places, is my understanding.
Well, right, because we have a lot of programs from their funding, so that's why I was asking. So we're not. I shouldn't say in compliance, but. Okay. Now we can go.
Alright, see everybody at six thirty.